Here we go. I'd like to call to order city council meeting of the city of Coffee City on March 9, 2020. If everybody will rise, please. Page of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing for the invocation, please. Father, we're so thankful today to be able to gather in our city, our fine city of Coffee City. Father, you know the work that needs to be done in this city. Lord, we ask you to bless each and every council member and each and every citizen that's represented in this city. Father, to all those first responders, our police officers, our fire department, we ask that you bless them, Father, and give them the strength to continue to provide service for this city. Father, we thank you for each and every employee of this city, Lord. Father, we thank you for our contractors that provide services to the city as well and to those that support the well-being through sales tax and through hotel occupancy tax. Father, we ask you to bless their businesses, Lord. Father, we ask you to let us conduct our business tonight for the furtherance of Coffee City and for its citizens in the name of Jesus. Amen. And Doug?
Councilman Councilberry here. Councilman Weaver here. Mayor President Chuck Dudley here. Mayor Wright.
Here.
Councilman Standford here. Councilman McDaniels here.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here. You've got some business to take care of. And I want to welcome you to our city council meeting in Coffee City. Our first item on the agenda is Consider an Act Upon Consent Items, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. I'll briefly read what those consist of. Approve the minutes of the city council meeting on January the 23rd as written. Approve the minutes from the city council meeting on February the 10th. There should be a correction on that, on those minutes, to say special call. I think it was on the-
On the 23rd.
On January 23rd. I'm sorry. So when we approved those, if we can approve that, was the correction. Approve the city check register for the month of February 2020. We'll also be approving the EDC minutes for January 2020. No meeting was held in February. I have asked the EDC to continue having their monthly meetings as they had approved previously. Approve the EDC hot account check register for January 2020 and February 2020. There are noted corrections on each of those. Approve the EDC general account check register for January 2020 and February 2020. Those are the items to be considered in our consent items. So I'll give you a few minutes to review those if you want.
Well, never is it enough time. I would like to make a motion to approve consent items seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. I'll see.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we have open forum as the next item, item 13. Has there been anybody signing up for open forum?
No, ma'am.
We have open forum. Okay, the mayor's report is the next item on the agenda. I wanted to discuss the warrant officer program. And Jim, if you will assist me in answering any questions-
Sure.
-that the council may have, I would appreciate it. The city itself has an extreme amount of money that has been uncollected for a period of time from 2010 to 2020. I realize that 2010 and some of these earlier years may be deemed uncollectible at this point, but it is a pretty significant amount of worth of half a million dollars. And so I think this warrant officer program is very important to the city as far as, as an attempt, an aggressive attempt to bring this money into the city. As far as this program goes, we would like to, as far as the operations, the operational aspect of implementing this, we would like to have a separate cost center in the budget. We'd be recommending that. Our rollout is March. We had hoped to roll it out earlier, but since warrant roundup was already underway, and a lot of time spent working that through was last weekend, we opted to let the rollout be after that. There is a subscription service. And we've talked about this before. You were given information on this at a prior council meeting. This TransUnion, T L X or T L O X P is a subscription service to TransUnion. It'll be at a cost to this program of $100 a month, which we feel like is going to be well spent because it will allow the officers who are working the warrant program to skip trace and get a lot more information. They can use social media. What else Jim did, Centron say, regarding that?
It, uh, TransUnion is a data collection company, as you know, and it collects data like where do you use your last credit card and stuff. So it can actually do a lot better job at pinpointing where the person is at. And we had one of the guys that, one of the violators that my guys tried to get this weekend had 11 warrants and from different years. So he's just kind of blowing it off and, you know, this is, we'd like to be able to serve those warrants. So, yeah, but the TransUnion, because it is a credit bureau, it's got a lot better information than what we can get.
Who uses it?
Who uses it?
Yeah, Kirk came out and where did you get the information from, for particulars, collecting this company? For, is this something of the other police agencies?
Yes.
From you with, have you used it? Have you reported to you on it?
Some of the agencies in Houston are using this.
Anybody local or around here anywhere using it?
I don't know. I couldn't answer that.
Who recommended it to you?
Uh, Centron.
Centron is the police officer that has, would you say he volunteered?
Yes. He was running warrants in Houston for his other agency.
Why don't you give us his history?
He was a NYPD cop for 10, 12 years and decided to move to the last basket of freedom and moved to Texas quite a while ago. He's been a cop here for, I don't know, eight years or so.
Is there a contract with this?
Yes.
How long?
One year. $1,200 bucks.
Question. Are those warrants written in such a way that there is an interest or some type of a penalty if they don't pay them on time?
Jim, would you want to answer that?
Well, when they, when a case goes to warrant status, we have a collection company built in to our software. And they start collecting when the defendant misses their first appearance, which is usually about 14 days. They monitor the case. They do all the mailouts. We don't have to do the postage any longer. And then they automatically put a hold on their driver's license after so many, so many days. And then on the 61st day, they pick up the case and add a 30% fee on top of everything else. And then at that point, I go in and I do warrants in batch, in batches. That's all the fees that can be added on at that point. Hopefully with having the warrant officer, we'll have, like the mayor said, an aggressive, you know, somebody that's actually going to show up on their door, on their doorstep rather than just phone call and send in letters and postcards to them.
Where I was headed, you have to understand something. What I'm talking about is 20 years old, okay? That when I was a police officer in Colorado, they had interest rates on those after they didn't go to court. So if somebody from Colorado got stopped in Coffee City, typically they would never do anything, but most states wouldn't because it wasn't worth them transporting back. In Colorado, that interest had kept accumulating to where they, you got stopped here and it didn't matter how big the warrant was or how small, they hold your butt back.
Well, we can actually put a hold on their driver's license. It's called a non-resident violator compact. And pretty much all of the states, there's a handful that don't participate, but say they've got a Nevada driver's license and they come down here running through. I had one today. It's got several, several citations, all within about a four-month span. And some of them were in warrant status already and then the other ones were fixing to go. But, yeah.
But once the judge produces the warrants, they go to the police department for service. So this is another aspect of that. That Centron has volunteered to service. He will run the program. He will assign the police officers to work certain areas, whether it's Houston, Dallas, or any of the surrounding areas where the warrants may be. So we're upping our collections for these because it is. One thing that occurred to me is that, you know, I don't like the fact that people can just blow us off. Okay, I don't like that. And it's income, it's pertinent to the city, okay, that we aggressively take action on this. Any other questions?
Do you have any idea how many warrants we've issued, like let's say 2019, how many dollars?
Yes. She's got a spreadsheet.
$210,000 roughly.
And what did we collect?
For 2019, the warrants, do we know?
There's no way we have to-
I don't have a number from, I don't, I don't have a number from, I get the GHS where they had a hand in it, but some of those have warrants mixed in with them.
Yeah, I see we've got $57,000 from GHS.
But then there's people that need to get their driver's license renewed and they're, you know, being diverted here to settle their obligations here.
Other than-
Yeah.
And then the in-house warrants were same. We had $8,500 in fiscal year. So that would be $70,000. So you've got about a third of them.
As, as-
Eight.
As I think we discussed earlier, it's very difficult with the, the way that we're currently structuring this to track exactly right outside of GHS. Right, Judge, why don't you talk about that? It was hard for us to pull the number.
At that time, but now that we have a warrant officer, he can tell me who he's made contact with. I'll get like a weekly list.
Okay, are you calling Centron?
Yes.
He's the warrant officer, yes.
How many hours is he going to put in a month? I know he's a volunteer. How many hours a month is he going to devote to this particular program and where does he live?
Houston. And he's, he's put in, well, we kind of told him to hold off until warrant roundup was done because we didn't want to, we didn't want to confuse the situation, but he's, he's put in at least eight to 12 hours in the last couple of weeks.
I think we're, tell me if I'm wrong. Where Don is going with this, he's concerned, as we all should be. That's number one, we've had a lot of turnover in our reserves over the last couple of years. You know, they're, what's the average length they're here? Six months, maybe?
I don't know. I haven't been chief that long.
Well, I'm just, in your tenure, you've had several that have come and gone. So we're, if we start this, how do we make sure it continues going forward?
I'll make sure it continues going forward.
Centron has-
He's just leading it, Phil.
Yes.
I'm, I've got enough to do, but he's leading it. The SOP has been written by him. Everything's been written. The, the release of liability, it's all written and, and signed by the, by a couple of officers that are ready to start with him. So, you know, it's, everything's there. So if he leaves, he'll pass it back, but I don't, I don't see that he's going to leave.
I mean, $1,200 is really nothing. The, and especially if it's for only a year where we could, if we see it's not paying-
Analyze it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I agree with the mayor. Any way we can collect more, higher percentage of money, I'm for. I just, I have seen in my tenure here, we've seen, a lot of programs that came in that actually never took place, you know, or were there for a short period of time and then went away. So, you know, just, I guess we're a little gun shy to that type of stuff.
Well, well, this to me, and I feel that because when I looked at this and I saw the dollars that were involved and I saw, I ran the collection percentages coming from a healthcare background. Collection percentages for medical bills is one of my pet peeves. And when I looked at the collection percentages that we've had over the years, this year up through October, we're at 31%. So I've already seen where the collections, that we're able to monitor that better. So, and I told one of the officers that I spoke with. I said, you know, if we can increase that to 50% in the first year, I'd be fine with that. But my goal is 95%, okay, that's my goal. And so this, this program's very dear to me and I'm going to push it. If nobody else is going to push it, I'm going to push it.
Warrants have been something that we've discussed for years.
Yes.
And we've had warrant officers. I remember one that was a bloody battle and he never collected one warrant. So, now I'm, as I said, if this will work, and I'm for it, I just, is there any way we can get it? The council members can get a monthly report of-
Yes. It'll be in your packet. It'll be in your packet. I think we can do that, can't we? Guys, am I not speaking out of turn?
I don't have any numbers from them.
Okay, but when we get the numbers-
They can-
We should be able to see next numbers. We should see something in April.
Yeah, well, Selena gives us a report.
Well, she gives us a number of that, yeah.
It says in-house. Do we need it in the column on the report? It says TransUnion, whatever the, we want to call it.
If you want to separate it out because that number's skewed, in my opinion, because it's people that walk in on their own.
Sure.
You know.
Which is the best thing.
Yeah.
So.
Well, in addition, the city has always paid for collection of warrants.
The defendant pays that.
I know, but, but the city has always paid a fee to the person collecting the warrant?
Oh, to the, to the warrant.
Officer.
To the warrant officer who was ever collecting.
Right.
The city is, so that's their incentive right now to move that program and to, to let it be viable for him, then he's going to have to show results.
And the pressure, you know, for lack of a better word, the more current of a list that they're working, the odds are better that they'll be able to make contact.
Well, I mean, if these things are three years old, the odds of collecting them, because they've already decided, I don't need that driver's license, so.
And I've got information, if any of the council members want to see that, I've got the reports, you know, and I've extrapolated a lot and manipulated a lot of data so I can see.
So this is just a booster shot to our existing collection agency?
I think it's a really good-
And our existing collection agency is a lot better than the ones we had previously?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I think it's a good thing.
Okay.
It's a really good thing.
I'm for that.
But we don't have an act on it.
No, we've already talked about the warrant officer program before. Do we need to consider an act?
It says, uh-
If you're going to approve the $100 a month.
Okay, then it says items listed below are placed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. So can we do that? It's up at the top. Any item? Or would you? I'd like to go ahead and get it approved. Can we do that?
Somebody can make a motion.
Okay, make a motion. I need a motion to consider an act on the warrant officer program in the expense of $1,200.
Well, I would make the motion that we approve the $1,200 for the warrant officer program. I would like it to be subject to checking with T M L to see if we can actually act on this tonight since it's not stated that way on the agenda. I know. We've never done that before.
You're not getting our unanimity.
We did for the EDC. I mean, I had that language. I copied that from another city's EDC. That's where I came up with that when we were doing it. But if you'd rather, if you'd feel better-
Well, we could just check. If they say, yeah, it's fine, then we'll go on. Otherwise, we'll-
Yeah.
We'll check for a second.
Yes, is there a second? More, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the next thing, the renewal of the, is not a consider an act item since it is a rollover from the current, is the renewal of the Republic Waste Service Contract with the following changes. We met with Gene, and Gene is here tonight. Thank you very much. And there were two changes for that agreement, which removed the 180-day notification for the renewal or the change. Typically, you know, if you're going to reconsider negotiating a contract, it's a 45 to 90-day period, which we're fine with. He removed it altogether. So the, the other change was a slight increase in our franchise fee, which is good for the city. So with that being said, and that's just an update on what we did. Gene, did you have anything that you would like to-
Well, I just, you know, honorable mayor, council, you know, we, the 180-day, that's pretty standard in the industry, and I just want to explain that. It's because of budgeting purposes for the, for a publicly traded company as well as for a city. Also, if there is any kind of a change, it gives, the equipment now takes eight to 14 months now to get. It's not like it was a long time ago. And I'm actually bidding on a city right now that's in heckling with who they have, and they hired a consultant. And even in theirs, it says 180-day, and it's just kind of a standard thing. But when I met with the mayor and the city administrator, they, they would like for that to be removed, and I'm easygoing. I'll take it out. It just, it just makes it easier all the way around if it is in there. It's in just about every, practically every contract. And, but I could sort of get, I sort of get the impression that we're looking for revenue here. And that's when afterwards, and after thought, I thought, well, you know, we could pay franchise fee on the commercial businesses. What we're collecting already, we'll just start paying the franchise fee on that. Nobody's rates are going up. It's just that we're taking that out of our profit to give to the city. And I went ahead and I was able to go back, because you get that quarterly. So I was able to manipulate the system and, there's no newspaper in here, hopefully. So I was able to manipulate our system to go back to January 1. So this April, you're going to be getting a franchise check for the commercial here. And hopefully that will help a little bit with your, with your goals. So it's something I'll think of doing. But we appreciate your business. We, we, we enjoy being in Coffee City. We don't have any issues here that I know, that I'm aware of. And that's, that's, that's worth, that's worth, that has value in it, you know? If you've ever had bad service, it's worth, it's value. And you still do have a really marketable rate. It's not out of, out of the, out of the, just blown up because I do that on purpose to make it difficult for anybody else to come in and really be able to sustain and do it at that rate. But I, we, we changed the language of the mayor, like the mayor wanted. And that's what you have before you today is approving the document. The contract itself has rolled over for another three years. It'll be here before you know it. But the document in front of you is what you're voting on.
Didn't we have that in here, Doug?
I have, I have two, two clean file fees here with me. And my authorized person has signed both of them already. So if it's approved tonight, then we'll just get your signature and then-
Like they've been approving it at the April meeting, when does it take effect?
It'll take effect in April. When, when this-
19th? I think it's the 19th April.
Oh.
I think is when the date, was that the date?
I think the 15th, maybe.
15th.
But it's, yeah, it is 15th.
Because I don't have it on here as a consider an act upon.
Oh.
So I was just going to let them know.
Oh, okay.
Or vision. Okay.
Oh, okay.
So we'll do that in April at the council meeting, which should be plenty of time.
Okay, sure.
Is that okay?
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It says April 12?
The next meeting.
Oh.
Any questions, Gene?
Oh, I was just going to say something nice. You're right there. I was going to say something nice.
I'll listen to, yeah, let's listen to that.
No, Gene is, and his company has been one of the biggest public services to Coffee City that has ever been in existence, that cleaned up Coffee City, is directly attributed to your company and the fine job that you've done. And I would like to say that I'm one of your biggest fans.
Well, thank you.
I can agree with that.
You're just really, really outstanding. And since we have more people like you, I don't know what would happen on this earth. The only thing I have on, I think it's on the term. It says for a three-year period.
That's an automatic rollover. Pam signed that before.
Well, I know he did, but my question is, and I'm going to ask the question no matter what you say.
Okay, Don.
I thought we were limited to our term of office. And we, everybody sitting at those tables got two-year term of office. And they didn't think we could enter into contracts that extended into someone else's term. Is that, Doug?
Can I interject?
Yeah.
Well, if you can or can't, I don't know.
Well, if you can or can't, I don't know. I haven't found any saying you can't, but y'all have been doing it for the last fifteen, twenty years.
We've done a lot of stuff we've been doing.
I understand.
I'd be happy to do it for a year. But I did want to point that out, that, that that was an objection in the past. And I'm, Gene, I don't think so. It'll be into you because in my opinion, as long as I'm in office, you're our trash guy forever.
Well, let's present that question to the council.
Okay.
Does the council have any objection to either rolling that back to the two years or not the three years or two years?
I don't know. It's real, as everybody said, it's been down for years.
It's small potatoes, but I did know, and since I'm sometimes back around with the legality of things there, and I've had that brought up to me several times.
Okay, okay, so.
We're just leaving it alone.
We're just going to leave it alone and leave it as is.
All right.
All right, thank you. Okay, E D C report.
Well, I'm not going to tell you. It's been a quiet day. We have gotten, gotten into a few things here, mostly revolving around the Lake Palestine Business Center. Lake Palestine Business Center, during the past two weeks, we've signed two contracts for leases. Unit number two and unit number four. Okay, unit number four is to be, you might recall the gentleman that came here to talk about getting a V A grant to buy the building. Well, so far, that has not borne fruit. So instead, he's going to lease into it. He's moving in this week. He expects to be open for business by the first of April. It's a lot of real repair business. Okay, the other lease that's taken place has a little controversy to go with it. The gentleman that's moved into it, so his daughter-in-law and son, or daughter and son-in-law, I'm sorry. The daughter and son-in-law have actually leased the place for him. They are going to, it's a short-term lease. It's only for three months. But they hope to start the beginnings of two businesses there. One of them a nonprofit through the daughter and of a previous connection she has. And the other, a basically equipment, tool and equipment business. The controversial part of it right now is that the gentleman is living in the office. We have researched it. We can't find anything wrong or illegal with living in the office space. Okay, the two office managers at the H and R Block next door have been a little bit unnerved by having a man live next door to them. They have made a complaint to us. They've made a complaint to the police department. Again, nothing illegal or wrong has been found. And I have since talked with the gentleman and his daughter. And I've talked to the ladies of the H and R Block. I've asked the man to modify his behavior. And he has said that he will. And so far, the evidence is that he has. Now, the one of the ladies at the H and R Block has put together a note to us recounting what led up to those meetings. Okay, as near as I can tell, those items have been resolved. The man has modified his behavior. Part of it was, he didn't realize that he was disturbing the ladies. Just with his presence, a single man around the place, first thing in the morning all day long. He has no car and he cannot drive. He walks around a lot. That's part of what he does for activity. The other part of it is up until probably tomorrow, it should have been earlier, the building was, or that office was only partially electrified. Did not have a full set of electricity in there, therefore he had no hot water. So without any hot water, it's a little more difficult to do some of the things that you need to do if you're going to live in the place. Like I say, the other behavior I've talked to him about, he said he's not going to do it. His daughter's talked to him about it. She says, and he says that he's not going to do it. We shouldn't have any real complaints from the ladies in the H and R Block. Based on that, all of that should be resolved. Okay? Yes, sir.
There's nothing in our lease contract that says a commercial building cannot be used for residential occupation?
There's absolutely nothing we can find, nor we explored through our insurance and the Texas Municipal League.
And it's not zoned. No zoning that says you can't do it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can't, we can't do it.
What about the liability if, if something happens to the guy there, there in the building?
The, again, the, it would, it's like anything else. If a man is renting the building, the office, and he has an accident in there, he is supposed to have his own insurance. If we are in fault, that's a different matter. Okay, that's like when you rent a house, you give renters insurance, right? Okay, well, near as we can tell, we are at the same level of liability as anybody else that's renting the place.
Has he provided insurance?
He doesn't have to provide insurance to us. He has to provide insurance for himself. Again, it's the same as if you rented a house, then whatever stuff you've got inside of your body, okay, is your responsibility.
Would he not have to submit a copy of that to us to show that he has, he has insurance to cover any loss?
Former renters have sent it to us. As of yet, I have not received anything from his daughter. But I just got the check also for the deposit and first month's rent.
Now, for both, for both of those units, we have the deposit and the first month's rent.
So what kind of business are they going to have in there? Is it going to generate any sales tax?
I hope so. Okay, the, the man's business. And again, what you're seeing here is an effort by the daughter and the son-in-law to get the man back on his feet and get something going. That's what you're looking at.
And just so I can insert, keep in mind, he's only moved here from California less than three weeks ago. So he's staying in the hotel, motel next door. That's why he was walking around, no car or anything, because he's, basically, his daughter said he's legally blind. And so he can't drive. But basically, that's why there's been a lot of activity of him walking around and back and forth. Has he been a nuisance to them next door? Could possibly be. But it was not anything where I think is going to be corrected. And just to say, it's not uncommon to have commercial places where people do stay in. Not saying it's very common, but it does happen. There's a lot of places where people do live in things. This is a little bit different type of building. And like I said, there is no zoning. There's nothing to do that. And a lot of cities don't even have zoning that say you can. It just depends on, so it's not an uncommon thing.
So what is the status at this point? Just let it go?
Yes, sir. At this point, he is a short-term renter, also living in there, working with his daughter to help try to set up a business for him. If they can get it going in that three months, great. If they can, and they move on, they move on.
We still don't know what kind of business.
Resale shop.
Now, that stands for what?
Resale.
We've been told furniture resale for.
Well, what I've been told is equipment.
Equipment.
Office furniture and equipment. But again, that is a wide variety of stuff. It's like somebody is still trying to figure out what they want to do. Don't have any problem with that. Okay? The, the other business is, is, is coming. Okay, there will be a fishing rod reel repair shop there by the first April.
It should do well.
And you would think, you know, this looks like location, location, location.
Yeah.
And there is none within about forty miles. Absolutely none. Even if you take it into Tyler, to Gander or Academy, it's going to be sent away to a regional center. There is nothing else until you get the other side of one of you that I have found, that I have found. Okay? In other business, we have some.
Jim, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we leave that.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to address the council. I have become aware of this situation due to the complaints that came about and not knowing what was transpiring. My concern is that, number one, does this unit have a shower?
Yes.
It does have a shower. It does have a.
Full bathroom.
Full bathroom.
And a half.
Okay, my next thing is, because I've not seen that building, okay? The next thing is, my concern was the fact that this is a business center, okay, not a residential center. And I understand that we have no zoning to restrict somebody staying in a unit. And initially, the lease was written that he would only be there from time to time. But the understanding became clear when his daughter showed up at the E D C meeting that he was going to be on a more permanent basis, that he was going to reside in the office. And my first concern overall, because she was quite upset when she came to the E D C because of the complaints that had been made by H and R Block, that we were somehow, or the E D C and the resident of the, or the tenant of the H and R Block was somehow slandering her father, calling him homeless, et cetera. So I, my concern is, is that I think operationally, this has exposed or could potentially expose the city to unwarranted scrutiny, et cetera. But this is just my opinion, as I stated to the lady. I am in no wise trying to undermine or override the decisions of the E D C board. But I was very concerned at the fact, the other fact that concerned me is that the lease agreement as a whole was not brought to the entire E D C board for approval and for discussion regarding these other issues. What is the tenant, you know, our current tenant? H and R Block has been a longtime tenant with the city. What, what is the impact going to be? What is the repercussions or what have you with the man living in the building? Liability questions coming up, et cetera. The zoning issue to me does not weigh that heavily because, again, this was a business proposition when this entity was purchased for resale, not for residential. So that is my viewpoint on this. This is how I would, I just want to make my opinion known that I think that the E D C could have handled this in a much better way by having the approval given, just like any other contract, for the sale of the business. For that sale of that center would have to be presented to the council. I mean, not to the council, but to the E D C board for approval and then to the council for final approval. I don't see where a lease agreement is any different than that in that regards because there are other things to consider that I don't think were considered in the book. So that's my, my statement.
Is he going to continue to live there after the business is going or what's the future?
I don't know. I have to wait till the end of the three-month approaches.
So he's got three months?
Yes.
Okay, what if they renew it for twelve months? Is he going to stay there then?
If they renew it for twelve months, we are going to sit down and we're going to ask that we get some kind of return on this. Sales tax.
Is the contract he has signed for ninety days, does it have an automatic renewal?
No.
Available in it?
No.
No.
Well, you can basically say no if you want to.
So we, we tried this and we liked it or we didn't like it. We needed to modify it this way or modify it that way. But we tried it. We tried it. We got some cash flow out.
Of course, none of the issues with H and R Block was known in any way until after it was all signed and done and he started moving in. Did all this come about to be told? So that was not anything to even know of until afterwards. But no, it's just a ninety day with no renewal or anything.
Take a few more minutes, if I may.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, one of the other items that we've been working on is the fishing tournaments. Something near and dear to your hearts, the fishing tournaments over at the Lake Palestine Resort. Larry, so far, we've had four qualifying tournaments. Is that correct?
We've had a total of nine tournaments since the first of the year. We've had four that qualify.
The four that qualify then means that we've given out twelve hundred dollars in prize money. Okay? The money goes to the resort, the resort. Larry is responsible for making sure that a tournament qualifies or not. For example, this weekend, we had, they had, what, two that didn't qualify?
We had four tournaments this weekend. What weekend? I mean, it was a tremendous weekend. Four big tournaments, I'm sorry, not big, four tournaments, two of which did not qualify.
Y'all were going to provide the council a recap list of all of these? With where the money went?
Sure. I, I mean, I, we can do that anytime. I don't, do you want that every month or every week? Whatever y'all want, we can get.
Every time we pay out.
For, for, if we could get it to Doug so he could put it as part of our package?
Sure.
For the meetings.
You'll have it.
Okay.
Every time we pay out.
What's the process, what's the process of money flowing? E D C writes a check. Does it go straight to the resort?
Yes, that's the way it has been done. Yeah, we've got, the resort has the money. Then as we sit down with each tournament director to determine whether that particular tournament qualifies or not.
I'm more concerned with when our auditor comes in and they start tracking the money. Where does it go? Who, is it a check written to Larry Paxton?
Nope.
Written to Lake, to Lake Palestine Resort?
Written to the resort.
The way it started out.
I have to, excuse me, that I have to give a receipt or a back to.
Me.
Her to show, so that y'all, y'all's books, her books, show exactly where the money went.
What, what I don't want to see happen is us have to give you a ten ninety nine at the end of the year for all of the money that's come straight to you.
No, absolutely, we don't want that.
No, but that's exactly what an auditor is going to say you got to do.
We don't have audits.
Yes, we do.
No, it was according to, according to, unless we have a city ordinance and that was decided here by the council that E D C didn't have audits.
The auditor will look at you. You see, I've been through several, last several years.
So we're going to have to pay something for it? So we're gonna have to pay something for it? I know we have in the past, but I'm not, because we were considering that.
If you read all the, all the new reports, it always covers something about the EDC.
It always has in the past.
But, but anytime money goes out in the past, forget me and forget, or what we're talking about here, it'd be the same issue. Anytime money has gone out, how has it been accounted for? I'm not.
Well, it's, it's an expense that is, will go on like for Sandy's mouth as she goes. It just goes in as an expense and for, to pay it back. You're not paying anything back.
Well, but neither would Sandy.
No, I'm proving, I have a sheet that says where I went.
We're paying her for her expenses she's incurred.
But you also gave us that sheet that you need to fill out to give back to me.
Right.
Okay. He hasn't yet.
As long as we've done that, sure, I think that's the same thing.
Okay, well, I think that's something we need to see, just so.
Yes.
We're comfortable with that.
Well, I'm not, y'all, I'm not arguing, I'm not trying to argue.
No, I know.
I'm just saying, you know, I, it should be.
I paid my money.
We do the paperwork.
Chewed by the auditor. Now, we got a new auditor coming this year, so.
As long as we do that paperwork the same way, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be the same on the books. It shouldn't be an expense.
According to my understanding of how this process was going to work, before any money was given to Larry, the qualifications had to be met and had to be provided to the EDC before any monies were dispersed. Is that not correct?
That is not correct.
It is not correct.
Physically impossible.
You don't know if it's a qualifying tournament before they give you the money?
That's correct.
Not, not till the night before.
Or maybe the morning of the tournament.
Depends on having boats show up or don't show up.
That was not my.
Taking a tournament, tell us, yeah, a tournament can tell me in advance, we're gonna have twenty-five boats. We're gonna have thirty-three boats.
So they may not qualify after that.
Exactly, and that's exactly what happened this weekend. We had the money for four tournaments, for four payouts because we had four tournaments that had told us they would have enough, they didn't even know about the payouts. They just, that's our question, you know, approximately, how many boats are you gonna have? We wanna know that because we've got lodging, we have to, we got things we have to do, that's what we wanna know. And all four of these tournaments gave us numbers that would have qualified for payout. Two of them did not qualify, but I had to have the money there in case, and frankly, I've got six hundred dollars sitting in my desk right now.
That is.
For the next tournaments coming up that, that will qualify because I had to have the money there for those four tournaments. Well, two of them didn't qualify. So I've already got the money for two more tournaments that do qualify.
And that's, that's the exact reason we need the paperwork.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, and I agree, I agree fully.
Because the, the, the one thing that concerns me is the trail. That the paper trail is established.
You're gonna have it, you're gonna have it.
And it's, and it's done, because right now, the EDC, in essence, you say you have six hundred dollars sitting in your desk drawer.
I do.
That the EDC has paid you for non-qualifying tournaments.
That's correct.
And that should be back into the, it should, it should be.
Well, and I could do that, I mean, I could physically give it back to them Monday morning and then, but there's, still, they're gonna have to give it back to me Thursday because I got two more tournaments coming up this weekend. That's all we're trying to, I mean, is.
Make it easier.
Make, yes, make it as easy as possible. The paper trail will be there.
Yeah.
Expecting tomorrow.
Well, just, just understand where I'm coming from. It may be easier, but does, but is it good business practice? And it is not, under my estimation, so, so that's my take on that.
Did I say something nice?
Yes. I think it's a great thing that you're doing. I do not have any problem with it. I'm having a problem with how it is and being administered.
Well, not, as long as there's a check written.
And what we're saying is, we would like the paperwork before the check is written.
As long as that check's been written, then we've got the paper trail started right there, so.
Could it not be a reimbursement after? Could he not submit for reimbursement after the tournament incentive? If, if he was to give the, I'm just saying.
That's, that's an EDC board decision. That's an EDC board issue.
We'll bring it up at the next meeting.
What, what, all we're doing, all I'm trying to do at this present time is to bring things to light that the EDC may not have thought about, may want to reconsider and move forward with this project. Doug?
I request that you drop the issue for your violation of the meeting, is that clear?
Oh, yes, okay, let's drop that.
However, the problem.
Now is it time for me to say something nice?
Say something nice.
Thank you, Jim Beggarly, for all your hard work. We really appreciate that, and in my opinion, I think you're doing a hell of a fine job. Thank you, Ray Rahay, for all your work on, on the, on the strip center there. I know you're working very hard on it, doing it. Thank you, Larry Paxton, for doing your best on the tournament thing. Thank you, Sandy Anna Berry, for doing all this check writing and bookkeeping and giving it to me. And thank you, Cynthia, for your concern also. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
What about me?
Oh, oh, I mean, let me thank the, the council members who approved Larry Paxton's statements. We have three, we have three sitting people here who approve the thing that you're debating right now. We have three people who approve this and are now questioning that. Thank you for your approval. And us two that abstained, well, we have nothing to say.
If I may have a little more EDC minutes, please? I would like to remind the council that May the sixteenth is the belts and hoses. I don't have any request from either the police department.
Fire department sent a request back in January.
I don't have it, sir.
I brought it up with the mayor in a staff meeting Friday that I hadn't heard from you yet.
I don't have it. I don't have a request from the police department, fire department, or the city council for any support to belts and hoses, okay? I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, if, if you want to. I, I want you to come up with something, if, if you need support.
We have, I sent a letter in January. I'll send you another one and I'll courtesy copy of the mayor tomorrow, the mayor pro tem.
Okay, but we, we don't have. And I know you probably want some support, probably, whether it's money, or you want people, or whatever. Please do it because now we have, the next EDC scheduled meeting is in April, okay? If, if we, if we wait till our scheduled meeting in April and have this request and we support it, and now we need to turn around and say, okay, here's a project. The city council needs to approve this project. One of us is gonna have a special call meeting, okay?
Okay, got you, got you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you very much.
Um. Oh.
Next.
Next judge. Let me confer just for a minute. All right, municipal court report.
For the month of February, we had a hundred and fifty-three new cases filed. Thirty-three were dismissed after driver's safety scores. Nine after deferred disposition. Five after proof of insurance. We had a total of ninety warrants that were issued in February. Seven cases were satisfied by jail credit. We had two that were waived for indigency totaling up to four hundred and eighty-four dollars and ten cents. And the funds and cost, total amount collected for February was thirty thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. GHS collected sixty-four hundred and ninety-two dollars. We did a monthly, we're doing a monthly transfer to the general fund of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. And I do not have the number for the warrant, correct?
Thirty-eight hundred.
How much?
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred.
And we're already double that for this month.
Good job.
Yep, for the warrant.
There, I'm gonna face spread through out there.
See, may I have any questions? Can I talk about Mary?
You can talk about Mary.
Oh, my gosh. So we hired a receptionist. She quickly showed herself. She picked up on everything, like, three days into it. Uh, she was entering tickets. I was actually able to take a day off the other day and not worry. She, she, the payment plans, um, talked to the mayor and, uh, last week, and Mary, if she was interested, to send her to court clerk school in July, just like two hundred and fifty dollars.
And what did she say?
Yes, yes. Y'all see a new face around, it's, it's her name is Mary.
She's very personable, I like her.
Yep.
Yes, she's very sharp.
Very.
Very, very sharp. And, uh, she's got a very professional, in a, very professional. I've heard her on the phone discussing, uh, issues with, with people, um, who are trying to satisfy their tickets. Um, the next judge, are you done? Any questions for the judge? Okay, um, police report.
Last month, we had seventy-one calls for service. We have, uh, three full-time officers, eleven reserve officers. We had two hundred and ten traffic stops, and of those stops, a hundred and two citations were issued totaling a hundred and thirty-one violations, a hundred and eight warnings, eleven vehicles were searched, uh, resulting in drugs. Four, four of the vehicles' drugs were found, one, uh, one gun, and one alcohol, and one stolen item. Attached to the police report is something that you probably haven't seen before. This is my racial profiling report. You don't need to approve it or anything, but this is what I send at the end of the year. You do need to receive once, so.
Is, this is for a full year?
This is for two thousand nineteen.
No, we're in here, chief, and I see that we're together, period.
No, it just says recording date?
Record, yeah. And you're seeing all the numbers.
Yeah, this is.
And, you know, I, I think that would be something you'd want to put on.
No, this is a standard form, I don't even do this. This is just the form that gets sent to T Cole.
He's plugged the numbers in, huh?
Yeah.
Guess they understand what it's for.
Yes, we have to do it every year, so it's due by March first. So you just have to receive at the next council meeting.
Okay, um, next on the agenda is, any, any questions for, okay, Jim?
fiscal year or calendar year?
For that report?
Calendar year. For that report?
Calendar.
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 Two thousand nineteen.
No questions for that, please? Okay, fire department report.
Last month, we had twenty-two calls, one house fire, thirteen medicals, two good and tense, five wrecks, one false alarm. I see Doug did print it out for y'all in color, but there's y'all better break down the next page back that breaks it down a little bit better, but, um. Then we have the list of events that's coming up. I'm going to Lufka tomorrow, and then, uh, we still got the city event for Easter, belts and hoses. Jim, I don't know what happened today, uh, because I did in January, I just, we just had a meeting Friday. I told the mayor I'd get with you this week on it because we only asked for thirty-two five, way down from what was for, and it's for sponsorship, not bankrolling. That way, y'all just write the check and it's done. But I'll get you a copy of it tomorrow when I get back from Lufka.
I'm sorry, I have to have them received.
I understand, I understand. Uh, July fourth, I don't know if anybody's done anything in the city, so right now, we're still in limbo on that. Uh, the flying in, that is still to be determined. They're debating on whether to do it or not because it always rains. I mean, it always rains. Square fair, the, the date's out, I think it's like the nineteenth of September that is at, uh, I'll, I will have it current for y'all next month, but my deal was a spring cleanup. Does anybody know what spring cleanup is, so I can allow my, tell my people?
We had it on a previous. Had it on a previous agenda.
Is it April twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fourth is a Friday.
No, it's, uh, it's either, I think it's the eighteenth, is it?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, I'm gonna look. Uh, the mayor called a long time ago, set it up. Oh, it's on the twenty-fifth.
April twenty-fifth.
Same day as the twenty.
Yeah, it was the.
Yeah. I'll try, I'll try to have some manpower here to help that do.
Well, we're cooking hot dogs too, so we're feeling.
Right, um, we've covered everything else pretty much. We did about twenty-four tons of hot mix in Highsaw area. We did, we hit about six spots in there. Uh, we did about a hundred and fifty square foot on Stevenson, and then we did about twenty-one square foot more in Highsaw that we just ran out of. We come back and hit it with a coal patch. In that mix, I forgot or I omitted, we did about four tons down here on Dell Williams' road, forty-two thirty-two. You turn in there, we just made the apron a little better. We haven't started down his road, that's a, um, I've given everything to the mayor on that. I don't know if we need to bring that up, budget time or whatever, but, um.
Isn't that a gated road, Chris?
It, it is a gated road, it is, there is more residents down there. And I took pictures of it last Saturday because we went down there to do some work and he had the gate shut. But that is a, our road. And my, my, I'm just being honest, if we can't get down there to patch a hole because he's got the gate shut, then is that really our road? But, I mean, but it is a city road, I mean, uh, uh, Mayor Waitman spent the entire allotment one year redoing that whole road, five thousand dollars, not counting materials, fixing that road. He wants us to come back down there and do it again, and there's only one house down at the end of that road, one.
Well, if he's got a lock on the gate, we can't do it.
You know, I don't, just something we gotta.
Break the lock.
Just got something we gotta look at. Well, if we get a call, we're going through there, or we'll just call Cody and he'll kick it in. But, uh, that's a private joke, but, uh. Cody leaned against the door the other day and the whole house almost fell down. The door stayed there, but the whole house almost fell.
I didn't kick it in.
On, uh, on part of fire chief's, uh, report there, April eleventh, I just want to point out that, uh, we are having a city event for an Easter egg hunt and a cookout, so, um, the church would like to be involved in that as well and will be contributing something. We had some leftover food from the, uh, Christmas, uh, event, and that will be utilized as the cookout, so.
Yeah, firearms.
What time is that on that couple of eleven?
We were looking at, uh, twelve, twelve to two, wasn't it?
Twelve to two, ten to two, something.
Give people time to, whatever they're doing, and they, it's a Saturday. But, you know, let them sleep in a little late. Uh, we're gonna put some more flyers out, see if we can't make a couple more people mad again on that. Anyway, TDM's coming up in May, I was, in our staff meeting on Friday, or meeting with the mayor, I told her I'll get with Doug and get those, uh, reservations made. Because that's a city requirement. Cleanup, four tons, letter to Beverly tomorrow. That's all I really have. I'm sorry Doug didn't print that in color for y'all.
It's okay.
Safety.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the fire team? To our final two items, consider an act. At some point in time, when we did the budget earlier, and I may have been, I may have misunderstood some things in this, so. I would like, we have some expenses that are coming around the corner with radio allocations and some other expenditures where grant money was anticipated, that is no longer forthcoming. Roads are, not roads, but radios are being upgraded by the county, so this is kind of like a forced issue for the city to have to assist the departments in upgrading equipment, changing equipment. So the first item on here is to consider an act upon approving expenditure of the allocated AFB budget for the E-Force module. Now, the reason that E-Force module was the ask from the police department. I will let Jim explain the benefits to going on and moving forward with this. And we can talk about some budget numbers. I'm giving you guys some additional information regarding where we stand with the budget. And I think that where we stand right now, we'll be able to make up any expenditure that the AFB, the expenses under the AFB would cost to the budget. So Jim, would you like to speak on E-Force?
Sure. We were supposed to get a thirty-six thousand dollar grant last year to go to COPS Inc., and that would have had the e-citation bundle in it. We didn't get the grant. There were too many agencies that tried to get that grant, too little money, so. This is just adding to the modules that we have already for E-Force, our current software. And just to allow us to do citations in car on the printers.
You've given a packet, and it is in your packet, an explanation of the benefit of the e-citations to dramatically reduce the time it takes to issue a citation and get officers off the road. With a manual system that we're using now, it takes ten to fifteen minutes to issue the citation. E-citation can reduce that time to two to three minutes. Issue citations quickly, minimal keystrokes, without compromising their situational awareness. These are all benefits to this. Reducing officer error since e-citation allows the officer to scan the driver's license. That's no longer a manual process, so we would have less errors. Get motorists back on their way quickly and reduce the motorists hostility. I don't understand how that might reduce some hostility to some people, but.
Well, the longer you, the longer you take pulling someone over, the angrier some people get.
They learn to hurry to begin with.
We didn't budget any of this fourteen thousand dollars?
It's two different deals here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Now, we budgeted through the AFB thirteen-six for that. And I don't really, you know, and it may be my ignorance, so the council can enlighten me that if the AFB is not to be considered as something that we can expend.
But it's there for a reason where it can be expended. We will have to modify the budget and send a copy of it to the county with an explanation as to why. And if, when do the actual radios have to be? Oh, this is not radio.
This is wrong, right? This is e-citation.
The, does this tie into all the computers we put in the cars now?
Yes, sir.
So this is what we, when we approved the computers, we thought we were going to get this as a grant, is that right?
It's not that we haven't been using the computers. We have warrant lists on the computers, so we've been able to catch people with warrants and bring them straight before the judge. So it's not that they've been a waste in the vehicle. We're using them for other, other things. But with this, we'll be able to actually pull up people on the computer and see if they're wanted.
And is it a direct linkage into the system, Judge? It's not to your system, but it is to y'all's.
Yes, it is to ours.
Okay, it's a direct linkage to their system. So right now they're having to double enter. They have to write it, and then they have to come back to the office, and they have to enter the tickets into their system.
Yes.
So it would remove that time.
I spent four full days on this racial profiling thing.
And this would handle it?
Yes.
Any discussions, guys?
You were talking about the money. Is thirteen-sixes what you said?
Yeah, that's what we had put when we were doing the original budget. We put in available fund balances.
Right.
The, which we could use for certain things, and thirteen-sixes is what we did at the time back in June last year, I guess.
So it says basically you go with this, or that's it, you gave us a budget period?
Yeah, and that's why it was far, because we had talked about having to, that we were going to get them, but that was, I thought was more for the radios than it was for E-Force at the time.
I'm sorry?
When we did the thirteen-six, our understanding was that we would probably get a grant for this E-Force.
Yes, it was COPS Inc., but yes.
Okay, the thirteen-six, we knew at the time that the county was changing the radio platform. And that thirteen-six, as I recall, and we go back and look at the notes, but was intended more to be used for the radios. Do you not have to have any radios?
I, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And looking at Chris's numbers, fire chief's numbers, we're talking twenty-five hundred dollars a unit. A radio. How many radios you gotta have?
Our radios are not the same as those.
Are they more expensive or less expensive?
More expensive.
Okay. How many radios you gotta have?
Three mobiles, four handhelds.
So seven at three thousand dollars a piece, let's just say for round numbers, that's twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
On top of this E-Force.
Yes, sir.
But you were wanting to roll your radios into next year's budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you do? So you're not going to be doing that in our fiscal year for the city?
No, sir.
Objection, if we get some budget right.
Okay, well, let me.
Can I see?
No.
No.
Let me, let me go ahead and just kind of, with the projections that I gave you guys in this section, I've been kind of going off on the finances that we had currently. And we projected without unbalances that there would be, and that lost. But the current track we're trending on, the forty-three thousand dollars that you see here is what, where we would be sitting if we continue on this track. And everybody understands the importance of that. So our numbers have looked good from the previous quarters. So I'm figuring that even though we extend this available fund balance, we will make it up by the, by the track that we're currently on.
Will E-Force save lives?
It'll save our lives.
That's important. Now that we've really got to talk about it. Do you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I would make a motion that we buy the police department the E-Force software to implement so they can use automatic ticket writing.
I'll say with that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, the next one is to consider an act upon approving the expenditure of allocated AFB budget for the fire department, new radios as required by the county. Now, we already know that the police department is going to face this expenditure as well, but we're going to look at that next budget cycle. And so this is another request to kind of like get ahead of the game. Chris, would you like to walk us through this?
I'll give you the Evelyn Woods version. We have seven mobile units. I mean, that's from boats to engines to everything, and then we need about ten handhelds. The department can operate, the system's supposed to go online in December. We can operate with four mobiles that can be put in the trucks. And we can, one handheld for like when we're on scene, you can talk. Our other system will still be in effect until it breaks the VHS system. But you know, of course, we're also hoping for some money coming out of the rodeo and, you know, maybe next budget. And we're trying grants and everything else, but. And the reason we didn't go all out for the whole shebang on the radios is, is you can see where I listed the gear there.
No, no, excuse me just a minute. This first page is everything you need, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's everything. The second page is how you would like the expenditure of the available fund balance.
Weighing all the needs. But that gear is about thirteen, let's just call it thirteen-two for grins and giggles. Don't do no good to have a radio if you don't have no gear when you get there to do anything. I mean, so we kind of split it fifty-fifty on, was the mindset on that. And we are about nine hundred dollars over the AFB, but we can absorb that.
Twenty-four-nine is what you actually want?
Twenty-four-nine, yes, sir. That's what it comes out to.
So the first page is not total?
No, that's the total of need. That shows all seven mobile units and then annotates the ten handhelds. It also addresses the gear. Went ahead and put the people down there, it's chief, basically it's Mallory, but where we can get it.
Does the county provide any money for any of this?
As far as gear, no, or radios. Their deal is they may give us one mobile and one handheld. So that would bring us to five and two. And then we're hoping to get some money out of the rodeo, and maybe that'll get us to six and three.
You know, the rodeo's the same day as the cleanup, so we're talking about having people, so.
Yeah, I'll have, I'll have some manpower here. They may be FCA, but we'll have, we'll have two or three here.
When do you need this, ma'am?
Six to eight weeks on the gear. I don't have Harris's due out date, but I would imagine it's six to eight weeks on them also. I just talked to the gear and they said it was ten weeks out. And that was last week, so. We're gonna have to do something. And it looks like I'm gonna be about eight hundred dollars over on my other budget, but I'm gonna be under on my fuel, which is my hysterical case. I'm just want to let y'all know now, I may have to move eight, nine hundred dollars from fuel to cover some other gear.
Can this waiting go into next year's budget since that starts July first?
The, the radios, yes. The gears, I would say no on the gear. I mean, I mean, if we have to wait, we have to wait, you just can't do nothing about it, but the longer we wait, the more it's going to get pushed out.
And what are you calling the difference between gear?
The bunker gear. On that. Yeah. Number four, actually. That's a bunker pants, coats, helmets, gloves.
Well, that's the same number as that.
Nomex hoods. Yeah, the radios can wait till. If they're gonna go online December first, then we just have to look at what Harris's timeout is, and we can back up from there. If they say eight weeks, we wouldn't need it till October. You know what I'm saying? If they say three months, then we would need it in September, but, but the gear.
So it could actually, if they approved one portion for the gear and we pushed the radios off until the next, to see what the next quarter numbers are.
That would be fabuloso. To me, the gear right now is more important than anything else. If y'all had to say choose radios, gears, it's gear.
Okay, which, what kind of gear are we?
This is the bunker gear, the helmets, the gloves, the nomex hoods, the boots. It's a full set from head to toe.
We refer to them as custom burnout jackets. I don't ask for burnout, very small for a bear. I guess burnout would be a bad word.
And that also is their rescue gear for car wrecks. You know, it's not just fires, it's, it's full fledged.
Well, they're beating this death, and we'll discuss it some more. I think we ought to just do exactly what Phil said, if we push off the radios and approve the four sets of gear, the cost of thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Ninety-two cents.
And I'm making a motion.
Same.
All in favor? Okay, motion carried. And at that point in time, if there's no further discussion, like a motion to adjourn. All in favor?